Are you ready, Dave?
And we're live, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Karen McInnes. I'm president of the Long Beach City Council and I'd like to welcome you to this evening's work session of the city council. With that, I'd like to hand it over to city manager Donna Gaden.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Tonight's presentation will be headed by Mr. John McNally.
So good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking the time to join us tonight, both council consultants, potential vendors and members of the public to discuss what is obviously a critically important issue for the city. And that being a parking installation of potential installation of parking meters in the central business district of the city. This has been a project that a number of staff have been working on really for the better part of a year. So I'd be remiss if I didn't start out by thanking Commissioner Walsh and other members of the police department, Controller Resnick, Dave Fraser, our city clerk, Corporation Counsel's Office, both Joseph Lupo and Rich Berrios, and members from our purchasing department for really carrying the water and trying to get this right over these past many months. So as I mentioned, parking meters, installation of parking meters in our central business district is an absolutely critical issue to the future of the city. It has been a solution that has been recommended not by just the city's financial consultants, but by the New York State Financial Restructuring Board, which they did in a report and an analysis of the city's finances in 2019. And just last year, they awarded the city $500,000 to go towards the upfront cost of the installation of said meters. While it is recognized by those authorities and experts as something that is critical for the city, nobody on this on the Zoom should make any mistake that this is anything but a heavy lift. This has been a subject that's been bandied about and discussed by several councils since parking meters in our central business district were dismantled and taken down in the 1970s. And the political will or gumption has never really existed to get it past the goal line. So I guess the question is, why is it different now than it has been over these several decades? Number one, the city's fiscal condition. As everybody on this call, or at least on the city side, and our residents should be aware, the city is in $500 million or half a billion dollars of debt and other outstanding obligations. That's a hole that's been dug over a long period of time. And we need to find other ways out of that hole other than just adding more property taxes for our residents. A significant portion of any revenue from installation of parking meters in our central business district would be derived from folks that do not live in the city. And that's where a preponderance or a significant chunk of additional revenue streams that the city comes up with need to come from. Number two, anyone that lives in Long Beach knows that we have a parking issue. It's citywide and it's acute in different areas and plays out differently in different areas. But in the central business district proper, we have a situation where we don't have real turnover in parking curbside or in the center medians. Free parking, quite frankly, is not free. Curbside parking in front of commercial and retail establishments is valued at anywhere between $50,000 to $100,000 a year to those storefronts. And if we're not getting meaningful turnover, that is significant and major lost revenue for those store owners in the central business district. So the other, the other element of this is that the revenue that is derived from this could potentially go towards coming up with solutions or at least studying the problems that exist in other areas, whether it's the West End, whether it's along Broadway, whether it's on Shore Road. The funds that are derived from the installation of parking meters could fund the studies to look at whether residential parking permits are something that we want to explore. Or it could even go towards acquiring parking assets that would add to the, the number of parking resources that we have throughout the city. The one other thing that I felt to mention for the acute problems in the central business district is we have an issue where there's generally two hour parking all throughout the district. So all of the shop keeps and employees of the store owners in the central businesses find themselves, they don't have designated spots. And they find themselves having to go out and move their cars every two hours because there's no other alternative. So taking a more comprehensive approach to how we handle our central business district would help alleviate that issue as well. Just by way of background and timeline, the, the city issued a request for proposal late last year. And we have been in discussions with the sole respondent to that request for proposal since early this year. It's really been over the past five weeks or so. I did say sole respondent, the team that is going to speak tonight, were the lone team that responded to the, the RFP. If we were not adequately impressed with this team, I, you will, you will find out before the end of the night, they are the worldwide industry leaders in providing these solutions. If we did not think that they were capable of addressing and implementing a system that would work for the city, we would have reissued an RFP. The RFP we issued was very complex. It dealt with not just installation of meters, but it dealt with the, the enforcement side of things. And it also, given the city's fiscal condition, it dealt with providing various scenarios for how the installation of the upfront part of it can take place without the city having to go through an undue financial burden upfront. Those are scenarios that we're all still affording. So this was a very intricate, very complex RFP that we put out. We have been in ongoing discussions and negotiations with the respondent. We are generally pleased with the direction that things are going on tonight. And we felt that now was the time to really engage the city council and the public in these discussions. Well, while staff have been working on this for the better part of a year, this is the first time that the council or even the public have heard anything about it outside of the larger conceptual idea of the city is looking at installation of parking meters in the central business district. So tonight is the first opportunity to get into the weeds on some of this stuff. And, and really the point of it is to, we're going to have our parking consultant who's been working with us, give a little bit of a background, go through the deal details of the scope of what we're talking about, what the request for proposal was, and then he's going to hand it off to the potential vendor. They're going to talk about their credentials, what they're proposing for the city. Each of those two presentations should take about 15 minutes. And then the opportunity for tonight is to really get council to answer questions that you might have, to get your feedback and to get direction on where things stand now so that we can, we can continue to move this critically important project forward. So unless there's questions, I will hand it over to the city's parking consultant, Jerry Giozza from Level G Parking Associates.
Thank you, John. I have a, I have a PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to call up. And I should be able to get through it in, in about, as John said, in about 15 minutes.
And I would just note before you get into it, Jerry, these should also be up on the city's website too, for anybody that wants to review these slides after tonight's presentations.
Okay. All right. Thank you for having me. My name is Jerry Giozza. I'm a parking consultant. We're based here on Long Island, but I've worked on parking programs all over the country, more locally. I've put together parking programs in the village of Mineola, the village of Patchogue, Great Neck Plaza, I'm working in the town of Southampton and quite a few others, including Bayshore, Islip, Town of Babylon and Huntington and so forth. I have been working with, with Dave Fraser and some others in the city of Long Beach over the past decade or so, looking at parking solutions. And it looks like we're, we're closing in on, on a plan that has been really 10 years in the making. So what are the goals and objectives of this plan? So parking management seeks to promote parking space turnover and other healthy parking patterns in the central business district. By instituting these regulations, it will help to facilitate a cleaner, safer, more customer-friendly parking environment. This in turn encourages economic development and investment in the CBD. We've seen it over and over. Downtown Bayshore is a perfect example. We put meters in downtown Bayshore about, about five or six years ago. Since then, interest and investment in downtown Bayshore has never been higher. In addition, the, the revenue that's generated from this program will provide a funding source to maintain, improve, beautify, and even expand the parking system. So a little bit of history. Parking meters were installed in downtown Long Beach in the 1950s. Removed in the 1970s. And meters were installed at the train station parking garage in 2004. There was a proposal to install parking meters in the West End in 2008. And there was an RFP to furnish install 35 parking meter kiosks in the CBD in 2011, exactly 10 years ago. And right shortly thereafter, the, the meters at the train station were upgraded in 2012. The current proposal is to institute a parking management plan in the CBD between Lafayette and Monroe. The, the system would promote the use of parking apps in addition to regular parking meter kiosks. Also, an important part of the program is is to provide employee parking zones and discounted parking for city residents. We'll get into that in a little more detail as we move forward. So here's a diagram of the, of the areas that would be impacted. Here we have Lafayette on the, on the west and Monroe on the east. And we're really centered around the train station and city hall. And again, we're looking this as, as phase one. Down the road, we could see that this parking management system can be expanded throughout the city. So what are the parking space classifications? We have transient parking. So these are going to be spaces set aside for parking on a first come, first served basis. And folks could use their app or their meter to pay for parking as they go. For regular users of the system, such as downtown employees, they would be able to to purchase a parking permit and park in designated areas scattered throughout the central business district. In the case of the employees, we'd be looking for employees to be parking in the center, center medians and the side streets. This would keep the prime parking spaces along the curbs in front of the stores open for, for transient parkers, shoppers, visitors. Those are the high turnover spaces. In addition, we'll have some free parking spaces. The handicap stalls we're proposing would be free. And we would also have some 10 minute limit spaces near the post office, city hall and the train station for quick in and out trips. Transient parking, our current models indicate that paid parking would be in effect all days between 9:00 AM and 11:00 PM on a first come, first served basis. A number of the spaces would be time limited, for example, two hour limit or four hour limit. But these time limits would fall off at 5:00 PM. So after five o'clock, you know, when folks are, are going to be going to dinner or perhaps to a movie or something like that, there would, there would be no time limit. We're looking at a pay by plate operation where the users would be entering their license plate number to begin a parking transaction. So they would either be able to conduct that transaction either through their smartphone on an app or at one of 36 strategically located parking meter kiosks. In addition, because of this unique structure, the pay by plate structure, which is becoming more commonplace throughout the country and throughout the region, it will allow us to give city residents a discount. If they register their parking, if they register their license plate within the system. So of course, when they're asked their license plate number, if they're registered as a city resident in the system, the, the rate screen that will come up will be that of a resident rather than a visitor, rather than a non-resident. And our current models are proposing that the residents would receive a 50% discount. The, the transient fees for comparable shore communities, popular resort communities in our area, Point Pleasant, New Jersey, three and a quarter per hour. Seaside Heights, Ocean City and Rehoboth Beach are all at $3 an hour. Permit parking, we're proposing to be in effect all days between 9:00 AM and 11:00 where permitted. And they also will be digital in nature. No more stickers. The license plate will be the permit, will act as the permit. So these will be digital permits. So your license plate is your parking permit. So when you purchase a permit, you register your plate in the system, whatever that classification may be. The system is smart. It knows where it is. It knows what you've paid for, what areas you are permitted to park. And we'll download that information to the license plate readers. And everything is interconnected. So how many spaces are we looking at in the central business district? Well, we're looking at the E or employee permits and daily parking spaces to be about 30%, 37% of the total, close to 500 spots. Two hour limit spots, close to 400 or about 30%. Four hour limit spaces, 319, one hour limit, 80, 30 minute limit, 42, and 10 minute limit free spaces, right now 15. But this, this, this is subject to change. We are still looking at specific areas for these free in and out spaces in particular. But this is the current model that we're working with. It's a, it's a workable model and it, it's based on studies that we've performed over the past few years. Enforcement, of course, is a critical component of the whole system. The, the system has to be enforced in order to ensure compliance, that people are parking where they should be, that the turnover is occurring, that they are putting money in the meters as, as expected. And, and all of the app transactions, kiosk transactions and digital permits would be license plate based. And enforcement will be conducted using license plate reader technology. The procurement included 10 vehicle mounted LPR bundles and 40 handheld units. So the, the, the LB PB would be, would be, would be outfitted with license plate readers capable of, of accommodating enforcement throughout not only the central business district where the meters are, but throughout the entire city. In terms of operations and maintenance, the, the current model, we, we have the vet that the vendor will operate and maintain the entire system for a period of five years. The city will be conducting parking enforcement. And as, and as a result of that new parking enforcement effort in the CBD, enforcing the kiosks, the apps, the permits and the time limits and so forth, we're assuming that four new full-time parking enforcement officer positions would be, would be budgeted in this program. And these would be special, specials, not, these would be, right, specials. So the capital program, I'll go through it. It's quite robust. It's high tech. There are multiple components here. They all need to be integrated, interconnected. And I'm just going to go through them, but this is quite a robust system, as John mentioned earlier. You know, one of the reasons we only had one response was because this was a unique offering that we wanted this, this robust system, multifaceted, multi-component to be fully integrated. And, and really, there are only so many firms in the United States capable of putting together a system of this, of this complexity. So what do we have? 36 multi-space meter kiosks, 10 vehicle mounted license plate reader bundles, 10 in-vehicle laptops and ticket riders. We need a couple extra vehicles, two Ford interceptor vehicles, brand new, that would be outfitted with the vehicle mounted LPR bundles. 40 handheld ticket riders that would upgrade the entire Long Beach Police Department. The perimeter egress LPR would be completed with an additional nine lanes. We would require a civil package, including signage and footings. A digital parking permit system, which would allow users to log on to a hosted website and purchase their, their parking permits. A pay by app system, a citation management system, so that whenever a citation is issued, it would be tracked, it would be followed, it would be, it would be categorized in the system and, and monitored. Fine collection services would also be provided by the vendor in cases when tickets are not promptly paid for. Merchant processing, the, the kiosks and the apps will be accepting credit cards. So merchant processing is included. All vendor provided. In addition, a 24/7 call center that would be provided by the vendor. All the enabling hardware, software and communications to allow these systems to, to talk to one another and to, and for all the data to be shared and properly, properly coordinated. A back office function with a dashboard where the operations can be monitored at all times. This is a critical piece of the entire thing. We will always know exactly how much cash, credit card transactions, permit transactions are, are conducted at all time through this dashboard. It would be an open, it would be an open source for us. It could be constantly monitored so that there, there could be no other, it's, it's, it's a high level of internal control in terms of following the cash and the, and the, and the, the transactions of permits and, and all other components of the system. And finally, the turnkey delivery of the entire system. The vendor will, will be delivering the entire system, fully integrated, tested and operational. No small task, but we believe we have the vendor on board who can do it. The contract structure, the structures currently under review are leased to buy. A vendor financed structure where the vendor would finance the, the entire installation and then be paid back through a revenue share. And we are also going to compare that with a city financed structure with new debt. So what will it take to implement this program? We will need to finalize our negotiations and the contract structure with the vendor. We'll require enabling legislation and ordinances. An important component would be a marketing, educational and public awareness campaign so that all the, the residents, businesses will know full in advance what to expect. Because there are components of the system where, where businesses can participate in validations programs and so forth. Finally, the system will need to be installed, integrated and tested. And we have, currently we're working, our models have a go-live date of Memorial Day. We have some challenges to meet that, that target date. It's a little bit of an aggressive schedule, but we think if all things break properly, it's a doable, it's a doable target date. So with that, we are going to turn this over to the vendor to introduce themselves and and to give their take on, on how they would be proceeding.
All right. Thanks, Jerry. Appreciate it. Hi, everybody. My name's Sean Wren. I represent Flowbird. We are a leading provider of parking solutions around the world, as John had mentioned. I will share a brief PowerPoint for you and introduce our team. Can everybody see this okay? It's all viewable for you all? Okay, perfect. Well, before I start, I, I did just want to say that we know how important this project is for you all. You know, for, for all the communities that we work with around the country, you know, we, we take them all. You know, it's, it's really important for us to get them all right. So we've assembled a strong team here that, that has delivered paid parking solutions to communities across the country. This project is very visible to the management here at Flowbird. And, and we're definitely committed to making sure that it gets off on the right foot and that we're, that we're visible in the community and, and we make sure that this project goes well. With me tonight is William Johansson. He's our senior project manager. He's, he's deployed, you know, many, many projects of this size and larger around the country. I also have James Oliveri with our subcontractor G Tekna. And he'll present in a little bit the enforcement solution. We also have with us Jason Casimir, also with G Tekna. I can say for sure that I've worked with both of them for the last probably five years now, and we work very well together. And I have no concerns that, that about the system that we'll deploy there in Long Beach. Just going to give you a little bit of background on Flowbird and get into the technology that we're proposing. So our team here, as I mentioned, Flowbird will be the prime contractor. As Jerry had mentioned, we'll take care of the full operations and the maintenance of the system locally in Long Beach. We're also a manufacturer, so we manufacture the pay stations that we're proposing. We also provide a mobile application and a permit system, so we manage that ourselves. We've got 50 years' experience in the parking industry and you can find our systems in 5,000 cities around the world. We'll go into that a little bit in a second. Again, we have G Tekna, who is our citation management partner. And also they provide a really sophisticated license plate recognition solution. They've been in business since 1993. They have over 150 clients in the US and Canada. And we also, one of our partners here is going to be RTR Financial Services. They'll be kind of on the very, very like backend of things when it comes to past due collections. So as you follow kind of the, the life cycle of a parking ticket, you know, they'll come at the end, you know, if we, if we have trouble collecting a parking ticket, they'll come at the, at the end there. They're based in Staten Island and they've been in business since 1998. Just some of the numbers for Flowbird. Like I said, we have over 5,000 customers around the world. In the US, we have about 900 clients. We are, as John said, we are the largest provider of on-street parking solutions on the planet and in the US. So, you know, we are confident in saying that, that you will not find anybody with more experience than Flowbird when it comes to this type of solution. We are financially stable. So, you know, when we're looking at this as a long-term project as you are. So we consistently generate over $300 million of revenue every year. And our revenues continue to grow as we expand our solutions around the world. We have over 1,300 employees and we have a market share for on-street parking of over 60%. around the world. We have over 1,300 employees and we have a market share for on-street parking of over 60%. Our systems are used weekly, on a weekly basis by over 100 million users. One thing that's really important for us is the investment in research and development. So we invest over $25 million a year into research and development. A lot of that is now going to digital solutions like our e-permit solution, like our app solution, and also back office reporting. So clients like yourselves can understand the occupancy levels on the street and really get the most out of the data. When it comes to the hardware, there's nobody that that does it better or has more deployments. We have over 320,000 pay stations deployed worldwide. And we've also deployed over 900 mobile apps around the world. This is just a snapshot of some of the locations you can find Flowbird in. So if you're lucky enough to go overseas, you know, and if you're in Paris or if you're in London, Moscow, you'll bump into a Flowbird pay station somewhere along your way, for sure. I'm sure that we've all been in New York City, so New York City is our oldest client. We started Parking Pilots with New York City in 1988. And they're also our largest client, so they have over 14,000 pay stations today in New York City. And they're also about to launch our mobile application. We won the RFP for the Park NYC app a few months ago. So we're on track to deploy that in the next few months. On the right-hand side, you can see some of our other U.S. deployments, Chicago being our second largest. They have close to 5,000 of our pay stations. City of Austin, very dynamic parking system they have there. Locally here, in the Philadelphia area, we just finished the deployment of over 1,800 pay stations in Philadelphia. And then just another highlight is Detroit, where we have close to 800 pay stations, as well as the Park Detroit app as well. We're very proud of our success on Long Island. If you go to many of the communities nearby Long Beach, you will see either Flowbird Pay Station or the Flowbird app in those communities. We're proud to say that that the city of Long Beach is a Flowbird client. The pay stations that are in the garage are our pay stations. And we've been working with Dave for for many years there to support those pay stations. Other highlights, Jerry had mentioned Islip. Brookhaven was is a project that went from like an unpaid parking solution to paid parking solution last year. And Rockville Center is another close by community that has about 40 or 50 of our pay stations. Some of them on-street, some of them in the parking lots, as well as the Flowbird app. So you can really see that we have a lot of experience on the island. And and we're really excited to expand what we have already in Long Beach. I'm going to hand it over just for a few minutes to James, so he can give you an overview of the G Tekna company.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you very much, Sean. Appreciate it. James Oliveri, I'm the Senior Solutions Advisor for G Tekna. Want to give everybody an overview of, I guess, who we are. We report to Harris Computers, who's owned by Constellation Software. Again, you're dealing with a company that's financially sound. We fall under the business unit within Harris, within the public safety sector. We've been providing for the last 20-plus years now, integrated e-citation. A lot of these other vendors that you see listed here underneath Harris, of course, these are all public safety, CAD and RMS vendors, so we've cross-pollinate our application and give them additional tools, tools and functions to be able to help, you know, create that more robust offering. Overall, we're, we have over 150 customers now worldwide. Profitable company, of course, we reached now, that's old numbers there, it's $3.5 billion that the company's offering, and of course, over 150 other countries. Employee base is around 15,000 and 140,000 customers. You'll note that we report directly to Buffalo, New York, which is within our area that we're proposing this solution to. So we're pretty proud of of this structure that we're bringing forward. You can go to the next slide. So I wanted to talk a little bit about this slide, and I don't know if some of you have already been to either downtown DC or Pittsburgh, Minneapolis. Yeah, if you ever get a parking ticket, well, that's our application that's running there. We're pretty proud. What we're putting together is a very strong, robust and proven solution, similar to the city of Pittsburgh that have Flowbird. Both Flowbird and G Tekna have been supporting Pittsburgh for over 20-plus years in parking enforcement processing, increase, improving their parking program, applying complacency and improving enforcement overall. Pittsburgh has integrated vehicle LPR. The city is fully pay-by-plate, as an example, pay-by-plate meters, permits. Everything's tied to the license plate. It's easy for residents, non-residents to come in, pay for their parking. The system's fully integrated. Everything speaks to the G Tekna enforcement application. The goal that we're bringing forward here is anybody transitioning to this, we understood already cut our teeth 15 years ago in implementing pay-by-plate. All the nuances behind that, we've addressed it, so that the goal here is not to issue tickets in error for whether it be latency issues or miscommunication. We have software intelligence to help address that. Our experience, of course, digs deep into the e-citation. We help a lot of cities, you know, address other departments, whether it be code or bylaw or property enforcement, whether it be fair ticket issuance. Cities like Massachusetts, with the transportation industry, you have MBTA, they do fair ticket issuance and parking, so we understand that really well and looking forward to bringing that program to the next level. Next slide, please. Oh, okay, go ahead, Sean. I think that's yours, and then we'll catch back up.
Yeah, so real quick, Jerry touched on the the products and solutions that we're going to deliver. Just wanted to highlight some of those for you this evening. As Jerry mentioned, you know, the the benefits of of bringing an integrated parking system to Long Beach, you know, would be, you know, a decrease in the traffic congestion there. You know, there's many studies out there that talk about people circling and circling circling blocks for parking. You know, the goal is to try to open up some spaces in front of the of the shops there, so people can easily find parking and also drive more traffic to the merchants. You know, the goal is to to get people into those shops and restaurants as quickly as possible. Driving around looking for a parking spot is not what we all want to be doing with our time. Obviously, revenues generated from a parking system can be used to improve the city. We've had, you know, clients like Cooperstown, New York implement paid parking and and, you know, they use the the revenues for various things, but, you know, streetlights, sidewalks, those sort of things. So parking revenues can really benefit the city long term. And, you know, with the Flowbird team and the G Tekna team here, you do get a very reliable customer customer-focused vendor solution. We really strive to make sure that that our customers are happy and and we have a customer focus. As Jerry had mentioned, parking kiosks, the the plan would be to implement parking kiosks in in certain areas of the city. We provide a solar-powered parking kiosk with a full-color touchscreen screen. It's really the most advanced parking system on the market and the most user-friendly, really acts like a like a tablet or an iPhone on the street. Our proposal at the moment is based on providing you with as many payment options as as you can, so coins, bills and credit card acceptance. There's also an extend-by-text option, so if you if you want, you could pay at the kiosk and then make a text to extend your time if there's still time left on your on your parking stay. And there's also a validation code option, which we can work with the merchants on to have them offer validations to their to their customers and employees. We also have an integrated mobile application that's on the App Store. Many communities on Long Island have the Flowbird mobile app already, such as Meniala, Rockville Center, Brookhaven, East Rockaway, so the the Flowbird app's already ingrained in the Long Island community. It allows people to skip the kiosk altogether. If they don't want to pay at the kiosk, they can just pay by their phone. You do get nice reminders to let you know that time's about to expire and you can extend that payment right from your phone up to the maximum time limit. There's also a Find My Car feature in case you're, you know, you kind of forget where you parked. The phone will will help you out with that. Jerry had also mentioned the e-permits, which is really becoming more popular as cities try to move away from stickers and hang tags. The goal is to make everything digital and by and based on the license plate. One nice thing about the permit system is once somebody purchases a permit, it's activated right away. There's no delay in waiting for a permit to be mailed to you. You are, you're good to go right away. You can have multiple vehicles on your on your permit system. And you can make payments online, so no need to go into an office to buy a permit or or make a payment. I'll let James talk a little bit about the enforcement solution here.
Sure. Thanks a lot, Sean. So in our proposal to the city, we put together a proven platform of hardware and software. On the left-hand side, the officers, of course, would eliminate the manual tickets, move towards a more electronic-based ticketing system. The application would reside on an Android device shown here. Of course, it's a connected Bluetooth to the printer. Of course, also on the right-hand side is integrated vehicle LPR with software. Both systems have been proven, they're very transparent, communicate amongst both. So I'll give you an example, people pay, of course, at the meters or through permits. Vehicle LPR can monitor and track complacency up and down the main road. Any violators, it would pop up saying unpaid license plate. And at that point, the officers can then populate the the basic information, location, violation, the vehicle information, and issue the citation to that vehicle. And at that point, all that is in real time, it's stored on the command center, where city staff will be able to see that. At the same time, those that information is displayed in real time on a web portal where customers can go on and and pay for that. So there's a little more description in the next slide. So this is a another added functionality as part of the back office is accountability and tracking your assets in real time. It's officer safety, it's awareness. So the back office tracks a lot of data that it's whether it be operational data, whether it be financial data, all that is stored. But not only that, but the heat map and activity function allows system administrators to monitor where their officers are in any given moment, track their assets as they're moving. If you lose a device, for example, you'd be able to locate it through GPS. But it allows a a high-level overview of how your operations are working day-to-day. The gap report is to be able to see, you know, what your officers are doing. Are they accountable? Have they been idle for X amount of time? The goal here is to be, you know, you've invested quite a bit in this program and we're giving you and bringing you forward some tools to be able to manage and monitor your operations live. This next slide here is, I know everybody in Long Beach, all the residents pay for their parking. It's the non-residents that don't pay. We, a lot of challenges came with COVID, right? So not everybody's allowed to get go to City Hall. So our self-serve customer portal has improved in the last year. We're adding more information, more relevant data on the ticket, on the ticket portal. I'll give you an example, when customers want to pay their ticket, they'll they'll go on the city website, it'll direct them to a portal where they are able to enter their license plate number, ticket number, and it'll prompt them directly to this type of page. Within the page, customers will be able to see all the photos that were taken, all the evidence of the citation. A copy of the ticket, a GPS address of where the ticket was issued, as well as the ability to pay one or multiple citations. Once that that's done, it closes the loop. Those that don't pay, of course, there's late notices that go out. And when it reaches a delinquent stage, at that point, it's exported to collections. And that's where the collections agency would make proper calls to see and pull in the revenue that's owed to the city. So this allows customers to be able to pay, even go as far as appeal. So no more paper-based appealing, mailing in either tickets or appeal letters. Everything can now be done online more efficiently and customer-friendly.
Thanks, James. And then to round out the system, as Jerry had mentioned, the data is really important. So what we provide as a team is a is a web-based hosted system for the city of Long Beach, where your your team would have access 24/7 to all reports that are related to the system, transactions, alarms on the pay stations, all the information about the enforcement. That's all there for you. Now, we are going to be operating the system. So this isn't something you're going to have to be doing on a day-to-day basis. But obviously, the data will be there if you're interested in it. And just to kind of round out the kind of the flow of how everything works and and just to give you some assurances here, all the, everything that happens with the system is is in real time. So all the pay stations, all the the app transactions and all the permits are pushed in real time to our servers and then pushed out to the enforcement officers. So the data's flowing real time based on the license plates. And as we mentioned before, this system's already in place in many communities around the country. It is tested and and working, so we don't have any concerns about the reliability of the system. I'll touch on operations and maintenance real quick. You know, Flowbird will be responsible for all the maintenance and the operations of the system and the customer support. I'm not going to go into all the bullets here, but, you know, we we understand that this is a critical program for you you all. And, you know, the the most important thing is going to be stakeholder engagement, talking to the merchants, talking to the community, getting their feedback on a regular basis and reviewing the program on a monthly basis. We'll have dedicated technician support in Long Beach so that we can make sure that the equipment is is always operational. And the, we have our 24/7 call center, which will take end-user support calls for for pay station operations, as well as the mobile app and permit questions. And then lastly, just wanted to touch on public awareness. I I had mentioned, you know, talking to key stakeholders, but but we do have a plan, a larger plan for public awareness that includes, you know, kind of creating a campaign, press releases, make sure that that the media is aware of the program well before we we start. And obviously, a signage package so that everybody's aware of how to pay and where to pay. On-site ambassadors is important for us, so we'll have an onsite ambassador team during the launch, talking to merchants, talking to parkers, making sure they're comfortable with the with the program. We typically encourage what we call a soft enforcement at the beginning. And that way, people get used to paying without without fearing the the parking tickets. Social media is very important. Monitoring social media is very important. We want to get the feedback from the community and make adjustments where we need to. And then after the launch, you know, we're obviously, we'll still be there, operating the system, still continuously monitoring social media and news, getting to a normal enforcement situation and continuing to survey the local merchants. So with that, I'm going to hand back to John and Um, so with that, I'm going to hand back to John and, um, you know, we're, we're free to answer any of your questions as well.
So, so there's your high-level overview. I know, I know that was actually quite a bit to digest. Um, but, you know, at this stage of the game, we would open the floor to the council to ask any questions that they might have of anybody that's presented tonight. Um, we also have the full bevy of, uh, city employees here to, to answer any questions from our side of things. Um, but this is, this is the opportunity to start to ask questions and start to give us direction on where we want to go with this.
Great. Thank, thank you, John, for that. And thank you, everyone, for your presentations. We really appreciate your time and all, already your dedication to, uh, Long Beach. Obviously, um, this, there's a lot to discuss and to discuss and a lot to digest. I mean, I remember hearing about level, level three, I think, level G, 10 years ago. So, um, this is something that's been in the works for a long time and, um, I'm not surprised that, you know, it's this council in the past that, uh, this admini-, these administrations that have really got to the heart of the issue. So with that, um, I'd like to sort of, uh, structure the, the next part of the discussion because again, there's so many, so many questions and so much information to digest. So first, uh, I'd like to start with the key stakeholders from the city, city, uh, city management to provide their insights because I think they are going to have a lot of answers to the questions that the council will have. After that, I'd like to hear, you know, from the council, ask their questions and focus on the operational issues of the, of the systems that are involved. And finally, we'll save the, I'd like to save the best for last, and that's the cost and the financing. Okay, so, um, with that, I'd like to hand it over to our key stakeholders and city leadership. Um, Ron, you want to take us, uh, Donna, do you want to take a stab first and then pass it on?
What I wanted to say is, um, I want both Ron and John and, uh, Dave Frazier, um, to talk. Um, because they have been with the project and they bring me in when necessary and we talk timelines and, I ask questions and then they go back. So Rod, John, Dave, you can start off.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would actually ask Commissioner Walsh to back clean up on this because, because I think he's got the most, uh, most recent sort of substance. I mean, I, I, I said my piece, uh, I think early on in, in, in queuing this up. This, this has been a long time coming. The, the city is in a, a position where, you know, this is a unique revenue stream that is, is not just a tax on residents. This is a user fee. Uh, this will benefit, you know, and it may be counterintuitive for some, but this is something that actually benefits when done well, and we, we believe we have the team in place to do it well. This benefits the, the businesses in our central business district and actually attracts economic development, um, and attracts new businesses and, and brings people into our community. So, I, I mean, y- you heard most of my perspective on the rationale why this is for. This is recommended from kind of the highest authorities at, at the state, our own financial consultants. Uh, the state backed it up with the help of Senator Kaminsky and others with, you know, a half million dollar grant to help pay for the upfront cost of this. So, uh, while, while we're understanding that this is a dramatic change for our, for our residents and how the city has functions, um, you know, th- this becomes an imperative, I, I think, to continue to, to grow the city's finances in ways that are not just an additional tax increase, increase on our residents. Um, a- and I think the funding streams that, that it creates allow us to e- explore other ways of whether it's, you know, creating increased mass transit options, biking options and bike lanes and dedicated facilities for that, acquiring assets for, for other fixed parking structures or construction of, of structured parking, multi-tiered construction. Um, you know, i- 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 a revenue stream like this doesn't just address what's happening there, but allows us to explore a- and address some of the other challenges happening throughout the city. So, you know, my, my preamble to this whole meeting, what was basically my take on it. Um, you know, if, if, if Mr. Frazier has anything else he would like to add because his engagement with this dates back over a decade. Um, but then obviously Commissioner Walsh has, uh, a whole lot to say and, uh, I think a very informed and unique perspective on this, and he's been very ingrained, uh, in this process to date. So I've, I have no doubt his comments would be enlightening as well.
Dave, do you have anything to add?
I'm, I'm, I'm just glad to see this come back around and see that we're, we're, we're moving forward with this. Um, it's been, you know, th- this is probably our third or fourth go-around on the central business district, trying to get meters put in. Um, this is something we've seen, uh, you know, most of the other communities on Long Island and, you know, and around, around the country, they, they have this, this type of, you know, these type of meters in place in, in their downtowns. Um, and, and they've been, um, you know, uh, good for those, for those loca-, locales. Um, I'm, I'm just very happy to see that we're, we're, we're moving forward and that we will, we'll finally be able to get this, uh, hopefully get this, uh, get this going.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. I really appreciate all your work on this over the years. Um, Commissioner Walsh, I know you could speak for about two or three hours on this, but, you know, let's try, try to keep it. Let's go for 10 or 15 minutes, okay?
Donna tell you to say that?
No.
Uh, actually, uh,
No, I would have sent you a text.
Um, I, I did, I could talk for a while, but really what I want to focus it on is the advancement to the city in general, uh, uh, that this is going, going to bring. Um, technologically, right now, what this is going to do for the city with regard to the police department and our enforcement efforts, it brings everything all together. Right now, we have a very disjointed, uh, parking management and summons, uh, system, uh, the, 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 the actual vendor that we use right now, um, th- th- their information is dated. It's very difficult to get a good scaffold floor information. It's very difficult to get, uh, the amount of collections that we actually have in the city. All that has been, uh, really beautifully demonstrated by, uh, Flowbird and G-Tecna specifically on how they're actually going to be able to take our information and data and bring it to such a way that it's usable to us so that, you know, we're not, uh, you, everybody notices the boots around town, right? So pragmatically, we don't want to boot a car that doesn't deserve to be booted. So this brings us to a level where we, the, 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 the error margin gets dra- dramatically reduced. They talk about LPRs, uh, for those who don't understand what an LPR is, that's a license plate reader. This system is based on our police officers, our specials driving through the lots and reading license plates. And when you go into the lot and you put your license plate in, when your plate expires, meaning when your time expires, a notification is automatically generated that people have overtime, have been overtime parking. So we'll be able to target our enforcement efforts. But beyond all that, the technological advancement prepares us for the next iterations for the city for the parking management plan. It's scalable, it's adjustable, this particular, uh, plan. Uh, the, the license place readers on our cars is going to enhance in general our, our, our crime fighting ability in the city. Um, things that people don't, don't think about. Uh, the license place readers, when they capture the license plates, if somebody commits a crime throughout the city, will now be able to see where they've been. If any of our cars are close by a car that's been in the area, the data that we get is going to be able to give us the ability to fight crime on a whole new level. Not something that, uh, you usually focus on with a parking program, but when I started to raise these questions and I brought them up, uh, to James Oliveri from G-Tecna, uh, and started to talk about the ways we could use the things to protect the citizens of the city from crime was, was dramat- like, I think it even, I think I even brought some things to, to Jim's attention that, that he didn't expect to be able to hear the way we could use this. But beyond all that, um, when you, we were really very careful when we discussed the program as a group with Flowbird, with G-Tecna, with John and every, and the team to try and think of everything that needed to be considered for the city. So how do we let the people in town rec-, you know, feel as if they're not being abused by the fees, right? And it's responsible. How do we get the turnover in the middle of the city to drive economic development? A lot of our store owners don't even recognize this, that, that the, the parking spots in front of their stores are generally worth about $350,000 in revenue every single year to their stores and they park in them. So when you start to change the behavior of people, giving them spots to park in, but leaving those spots in front of the stores to, to be subject to the turnover that the city would like to see for, to, to, to start the revenue generate, these are the types of things that really start to change the culture and will help revitalize Long Beach even that much further. Um, there's, um, the, 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 even, even to the point where Jerry, the, our consultant, said, you know, giving people the first 10 minutes free. You, you still got to go over to the meter. You still got to put your license plate in, but if you know you're running in and running out, you're registered, you get your first 10 minutes free, you get in your car and you leave. That's what we really want to focus on, the turnover of the spots, getting people to change the way they treat their parking and the parking situation and the center of town and eventually the whole city. So, I mean, if there's specific questions that you have as a council, I'll be more than happy to address the considerations that I've brought to bear on it that we discussed. Um, I have to say that my confidence in Flowbird and G-Tecna as their partner was, um, was magnified after our discussions. The scalability of the system is something that, you know, we're starting out with 36, I believe, of these parking meters. As we, we talked about it, if the meters aren't being used, we can scale down the number of meters we use and we can utilize them in the next phase of our parking management program for the city. If they, if we choose never to go any further, we can sell that equipment because the equipment doesn't change that much. It's software-based. The hardware doesn't change so much, the software. We, we talked about making sure that all of the software is always the most current. We don't, you don't have to go to the kiosk to upgrade your system. It's all done electronically. If we're seeing things from our side where we're having problems with these, everything is managed, uh, is managed by the, uh, by the company. So the one thing I do want to say is the city doesn't have to become the expert in managing the equipment and the software. The city logistically handles the enforcement, the fines and the, and the management, you know, what the spaces are, how do we want people to park in spaces? Other than that, everything's over to the company and we have experts able to deal with that. If we choose to change that after the five-year t- uh, term, we can hire experts to do it or another company. But, I mean, generally speaking, when you have something that works and it's not broken, don't try and fix it. You know, so I was very impressed with the, with, with, with their, uh, their competency in the space. I was impressed with their ability to address all of the technological concerns that I had, dr- making sure that we were able to integrate all of our systems. Very importantly, so someone might say, why do we need 40 of these handheld units? Well, guess what? All of our specials on our boardwalk now can have one of these units and they can do city codes in there and they can do parking violations. No more walking around with a pair. And you give one to every two, they walk around, they can do that anywhere in the city. You can do these things. It doesn't have to be a parking meter to utilize the summons ability for these handhelds. And that's going to, that's going to reduce costs on, in a lot of different areas, not only in just the printing of our summonses, but the, the, the ability to deal with a summons automatically. Right now, before we, we get rid of our current vendor, we're going to probably look for an amnesty program. You have outstanding summonses, mail in your fines and you'll be forgiven so that we clean up as much as we can before we switch over. With this system, it's automatic. After 30 days, they start, so they tell you, you're, you're fined, you didn't come to court. They'll send out a mailer. If that doesn't work, another 30 days, your fine is now going to be this, and they start and they'll put you in collections automatically. Instead of us having to trigger an automatic collections thing, now you go into collections and then there's, you know, it's a fee-based structure that, you know, it's, uh, they get their, 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 their amount that they charge as a service fee and this city gets a much higher revenue generation from the summonses that we've been issuing. So, uh, that is a quick overview from my perspective and the way I looked at it. Um, I, uh, it's all up here, so anything you want to ask me, I'll be more than happy to, uh, to address your questions. How'd I do, Donna?
Great. But before I hand it over to, to the council, can you just speak about what, uh, the sta- staff, can you speak about why you chose the Cadillac version of, uh, of systems in the RFP? And then what, uh, municipalities on Long Island did you talk to, um, in doing your analysis?
Uh, you told me specifically, you want to talk to Jerry about that?
Or the, you know, I'd like to hear from the staff, you know, because they really can, you guys did the RFP.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we chose the, the Cadillac version per se. We, we, in our, in our ongoing discussions on a staff level are trying to look at what, what position is the city in and what would work for the city. So we, we recognized upfront, you know, a, a major capital investment uh, in order to get longer-term gains might not be the right fit for us. But we also know that, you know, i- if you're just, if you're just installing these kiosks through town and you're not looking forward to the future of, should this be app-based? I, I mean, and really, quite frankly, part of our discussions were, should this be only app-based? Um, but we, we, we dialed that back to include at this stage of the game, more kiosks than we had originally proposed because we feel that that's the more equitable way to go about it and it's the more pragmatic way to go about it. Um, because we can't expect everybody to have a smartphone at this day and age. You know, there's, there's higher saturation of that. Um, but where we really ended up is, you know, what, what we felt would work for, for our residents. We, we wanted, we did not want to be punitive towards our residents. We did not want to, uh, adversely impact the flow of business in our central business district. We didn't want to, you know, slow down economic development. Um, and we put, you know, it was up on the website and we can provide it to any of the council. We put forward a very detailed, very intricate, very complex request for proposal that we thought would work for our city.
Let me, uh, let me, uh, let me say one quick thing there.
Sure.
When you say like the Cadillac of, of things, this system, there are ways to greatly enhance this from where we are even. Like there are ways where your license plate gets read every time you pull into a lot and it tells you right away if that car doesn't leave the, the lot within 10 minutes. An alert goes, you got a car in this lot that never left because the plate wasn't read on the way. Yeah, we chose not to go that far with it. I mean, each one of those license breaks, it can be very expensive. We can always do that later. What we did choose for this is, is to have people because the people aren't just going to be doing the center part of town and we expanded the hours, right? We went from nine in the morning until 11 o'clock at night. That generates revenue, but now we have to have people to enforce it until 11 o'clock at night.
Right.
So it, it's, it kind of goes hand in hand. I mean, the Cadillac system, uh, if you want to talk about that you, we could dramatically enhance this to triple the price if you wanted to. But it was really considered, what is the best fit for the culture we're trying to create as we understand it in Long Beach, to create the responsibility and the responsible use of the spots to drive revenue generation into our stores, to create the turnover. Because you, you can sit in Geno's for four hours and you're still only going to eat one meal, or you can sit in Geno's for 45 minutes, get out and somebody else comes in. You know, just using that as an example. So, oh, I think that we came up with a good balance. But of course, the council will have its own opinion as to what direction the council feels the city should go with.
We also looked at technology and, and that the technology can be used in the future. We didn't want to get into the part where we're looking at technology, what is good for today because we know technology changes rapidly. And so one of the ways, and what I will say is that this, this conversation that we've been having about this with the staff and the vendor and, uh, with Jerry has been going on for months because we have said, well, what about this? Let's take consideration of this. Um, so this, by far, this is not the Cadillac version. But we came up with the best version we thought that would work for the city.
Okay. Well, since we've been at this an hour and 15 minutes, I'd like my colleagues to start, um, as, asking their questions. If someone could, uh, on the council could start with their series of questions, please. Anybody?
Um, Karen, did you say, I'm, I'm happy to, but I thought I heard you say in the beginning that we're doing the financial pieces at the end. Do, is that the case or if you have?
I think to structure the conversation to, you know, to, so.
Minor financial, so I'll, I'll.
Oh, wait. Any, uh, Liz, John, Roy?
Minor financial too.
Minor financial too. I think the financial is the big aspect here. I I don't, you know, I'll wait till after the financial part.
Operational part. John, do you have any operational questions?
I do.
Thank you, John.
Would you, you would have been surprised if I didn't.
Exactly.
Um, I was wondering, uh, I guess Jerry, this might be for you, could you just discuss a little bit that inaugural pay zone inventory that you showed us? Can you just uh talk a little bit about what that's based on, how you came up with that uh uh division of spaces?
Sure, um, o- over the p- over the past, over the past few years, we've been um, we've been conducting occupancy counts um in these thirteen hundred and fifty spaces to see uh what the parking patterns were. Uh, so as a result of those observations, uh, we were able to get estimates of how many of those cars were employees, how many were visitors, how many were commuters and so forth, and we were able to categorize uh, you know, based on those observations. And um, and and the the inaugural time limits that we established were as a result of those observations. Now, um, you know, I will say that I've been involved with parking systems all over the country. The best ones are always tinkering with that. You might add a few uh two hour spaces if you don't have enough, you might, you know, I will tell you that we are not going to get it perfect on, you know, on the first uh rollout. But um, but with this system that we have, we can monitor all the functions and we can make adjustments along the way and tweak it until we get it just right.
Okay, thanks. Um, so obviously, anybody that lives in Long Beach knows we have a fair number of businesses where people kind of run in and out. Um, so the hallmark of driving down Park Avenue was having to go around all the double parked cars in the central business district. Uh, nice to hear that this first free ten minutes may alleviate some of that because people then could actually park, get ten minutes, run in, pick up their pizza or their dry cleaning and um and run out. But let's say, uh, Ron brought up a point, somebody runs into a store for forty five minutes, you run into CVS for thirty minutes. Does the system allow to uh to purchase in in partial hour increments or or less than hour increments, or do you have to purchase in hour increments?
My recommendation was that uh if if if, for example, it's um, uh, it's 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 two dollars an hour um, that, you know, you could get, you can get fifteen minutes for uh for fifty cents or seven and a half minutes for a quarter.
Okay, so they do have the, there will be the ability if they think they're going to be in a store for thirty minutes to to get thirty minutes.
That's correct.
Okay.
Or at least the system has capacity for that, Mr. Bender.
Okay, Mr. Bender, whoa, getting formal.
Councilman Bender, John, however you like.
Uh, the other thing too, I I guess I I didn't hear addressed, it's not necessarily a part of a pay system, but it is part of a parking management system, is uh deliveries. We get a lot of stores along there that get deliveries, we don't have dedicated um, uh, delivery zones, loading unloading zones uh in the central business district. So again, we have lots of delivery trucks, double parking. Was there any thought given to allocating space for delivery vehicles? So again, they're not A, blocking parking spots when they double park. Uh, and then also, you know, impacting the flow of traffic.
Delivery, I think, is something that we still need to work on. You know, the the initial focus of this is you want to go get a slice of pizza at Gino's? You know, I I is twenty three year resident of the city, I don't know how many times I've passed on a slice at Gino's because it's impossible to get a parking spot there um and traveled around. So I, you know, I think on this initial pass, what we're looking to do i- is is try and get that turnover. I I think it's going to take a little bit more of an extensive study to figure out how we, you know, so the quicker turnover of the curbside parking should help alleviate a very large chunk of the double parking that takes place. The delivery component, Commissioner Walsh appears to have some thoughts on it, but that's going to take a little bit more.
Generalize the behavior of people with the double parking of trucks. When you don't have spots for people to pull in, right, w- with these with these trucks and stuff like that, they'll double park. Now, double parking in a three lane area is actually permissible for uh for commercial vehicles that are actively loading and unloading in in commercial zones unless it's strictly prohibited by uh an ordinance or or uh a law, right? In the case that's happening in front of in front of all these stores right now, uh, Councilman Bender, is that there's no turnover of those spaces, at least a lot of them stay parked for longer periods of time. So as you start to drive uh people to pull in and out of those spaces, there'll be more opportunity, one, for the trucks or the delivery vehicles to pull in. But secondly, this is going to be enforcement intensive. The the success of this program and the success of how this is going to work is almost wholly dependent upon the police department ensuring that people are paying the meters. And that includes the entire central district, uh, business district area. So those cars that we're buying and those specials that we're hiring, that's going to be their post, is to be driving up and down this area. They'll be moving double parked cars along or they'll get a ticket. If there's a spot just up the block for a truck to be parked in and he just didn't want to walk six, uh, you know, six, uh, three stores away, he'll be told park in the spot or you'll get a ticket. So it changes the behavior and the manner in which people are used to double and sometimes triple parking in front of that area, which we've all seen. Right now, it's it's, you know, we we focus in on it, but the the double parking takes place, as we know in the summertime, way too often. But the the focus of the special enforcement officers that are going to be in this area will be in the central business district to ensure that people are using the spots and ensure that there's no double parking. That's going to be part of this whole enforcement effort, changing the way people behave in that area.
Okay, I I guess I would just suggest thinking about the delivery component of it because if these trucks are, i- i- if the goal is to turn over spots, if these trucks are blocking four spots for thirty minutes while they're unloading and or loading, you just took revenue, you know, out of out of the system. Um, so I think we need to 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 think about that because
Yeah, absolutely.
There's a lot of deliveries that happen on Park Avenue, we see it every day.
So I know that part of the consideration that Jerry had when he was doing the analysis of the spots is he went with what was existing zones already. There are some loading zones and unloading zones, and then there's certain restrictions. The 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 consideration is that the council would like to see uh areas uh of loading zones to be considered. I'm sure Jerry can come up with some suggested area, areas based upon the actual traffic patterns that take place to suggest use that. Remember, when you make it to loading zone, you take it away from the inventory for people to park in. So it's a give and take.
Yeah, just something to consider.
Absolutely, it can be done.
Um, and then I guess the last thing, non-financial, um, the the permits uh for the train station. Uh, could those be also uh put in through this system, purchased through this system?
They are, they actually are going to be, everything is going to be going to plate based systems. So uh your plate will be registered as a uh uh someone who uses that, and that's going to be something that will be working with Dave Fraser. So there'll be no more uh uh of the of the physical permit anymore. You'll go in, you'll have your, you'll get your permit, you'll get the ability to do it, it gets entered into the system, your plate's in, and then you just put your plate in and you're automatically allowed, when you're in that yard, you know, that that yard, the parking structure, it'll work that way so that it automatically gets billed as being in the parking garage.
All right, and and sorry, I did have one more. So I actually, I have the Flowbird application on my phone. Um, now I know sometimes w- when you've used it, you have to put in a space number, you know, where you park. So does that now mean we're going to have to create numbered parking spots?
No.
Or?
The way it actually works here, and I'm I'm probably biting off your, a little bit of your thunder here, Jerry, but there are, there are mobile applica- mobile zones. So you look at the sign of where you park and you just put in the zone that you're in, that automatically ties to the spaces that are allocated to that zone and the amount of time that you're allowed to park there. And when you put that into the app, it'll pop up with the maximum amount of time that you're allowed to purchase based upon the zone that you're in.
Okay.
Okay, um, Liz, do you have any operational questions?
No, my my concern, of course, is of public outreach. Which has been addressed, so I'm I'm.
What what, you know, Liz, it's funny that you said that, we actually um, I asked them about that, about the communications component, and they uh, Flowbird actually has, when he was talking about those ambassadors, he mentioned uh part in the ambassadors, they actually have a team of people that come into the town with communications pamphleting and they go into every single store and they tell every single store owner what the program is, how it's going to work, explain it to them, and even work with the public as they're out there to create that understanding before it gets implemented. And uh like he said, you always start out with something soft, you don't start out on day one hammering people with tickets. You start on educating the public over time so that after a month or so of them starting to understand that, hey, you're going to have to pay for parking now, and then you start easing your way into enforcement over a period of time, so that, I'm not sure what their uh, what their normal uh phase in is, but I'm sure it's between one and three months, that they, by the time the end of the period, it's more strict enforcement of not paying your summonses. I'm not sure exactly though, I'd have to ask Flowbird for their recommendations and for what they actually see in cities of similar size and demographics as to what we're doing.
Great.
I have, I have a couple of operational questions that came up, you know.
Okay, Ryan.
The, uh, Ron, you said that uh it's it's all plate based. If you, let's say your car's being repaired at the dealer and you get a loan of cars, is there a way to switch your plate for the time being?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure the answer to that. I'm sure it could be built into the system if we wanted to, because it's like I said, it's a software program. So if there's a temporary plate for your particular car, so it, when you say plate based, if you're an in-town resident and your car is uh needing to fix, I'm sure there's a way that we could, if you went upstairs to the uh, to the uh clerk's office and you said, look, my permit is normally this, this is where I live, I have a rented car, I'm going to have it for three weeks. I'm sure there's a way we can temporarily give a a a a permit for a shorter period of time for that. It wouldn't matter if you don't live in town, because as long as the car has a plate.
Yeah, no, no, if it, if it's something that can be done.
That's a great consideration, though. It's not something that came up in discussion, but I'm I'm positive because it's 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 software based that we'd be able to do that.
And Ron, um, this is Jason from GTECHNA. What I'd like to say here is you could actually have a configuration, potentially where you could associate multiple plates to a permit and only one could park in a zone at any given time, uh, or would generate a shared permit violation. So that could be one way to do it.
There it is.
Well, you never know, if you're lucky enough to get a loan of a car, you don't know. Yeah, I've yet to get one, but uh the other question is, you had said that double parking is permitted when you're unloading in a a three lane street. And then you said that uh, however, if you saw a place down the the road that the truck could go into, you would tell the truck to move or you would get, give them a ticket. What would be the basis for the ticket if it's permitted?
So everything's written in the VTL. I didn't, I don't have that particular section memorized, but after studying so many tests over my whole life, there is a certain number of feet, that if there's an open parking space within a cer- certain number of feet of where you are double parked and you're doing an active delivery, you must pull into that space or you're going to take.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do have.
I just don't remember, yeah.
All right.
I used to have it memorized, not anymore. So I still have a bunch of it up there.
All right.
Anything else, Roy?
Nope.
Okay, I just have a few, a few quick questions. Um, I would just like to um make sure or state now that, you know, I do have some concern about the uh public uh employee parking and uh the formation of an illicit market for those spots. So um, I think enforcement is going to be key and like, you know, that is equitable, that, you know, how and that the pub, the policy for employee parking, we actually published on the website and that ought to be communicated to all businesses in maybe multiple formats.
It actually goes even deeper than that. Each uh each particular business will get a visit from the vendor, they'll explain the rules to them that that we've set up. And, you know, the number of employees, now an employee could get a employee parking, but when, it's going to be up to the, there's only going to be a certain number of permits that each particular business is going to allow to have to encourage them that, you know, hey, look, you know, if an employee leaves, you got to let us know, because somebody else's plate is going to be able to use the employee parking. You see, so their plate gets registered. So if if I work now at Starbucks and Starbucks wants to park here, then my plate gets registered to Starbucks as an employee for as long as I worked there. When I no longer work there, it behooves Starbucks to get my plate off and the new employee's plate on so that they can also get the benefit of the reduced parking and a closer spot.
It it's tough when you're managing staff with different dedication levels of employment, you know, so it's something to keep an eye on.
Yep.
Um, so this is like, I think, a twofold question. Um, you you touched upon it earlier, Ron, where um it seems that the plate information is integrated into other systems within the city. So that, so my first question is, uh, is there a privacy issue that um someone can talk about?
No, there's no, uh, you have no right to privacy of your license plate information or data. When you register your car, your car is, it's it's open and public place. So I mean, I couldn't, uh, to the point where even if I was flying an airplane and had an LPR and it was on your private property, I'd still be able to uh, still be able to take your plate information. Uh, that be, huh, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that being said, any place you go in public where your plate is red, it's considered public information.
Okay, so if you take that a step further, can you use that information to determine whether or not um a person with a Long Beach, um, a license plate registered in Long Beach uh is uh renting a lea- an illegal apartment?
So it's very interesting that you say that. Uh, with the LPR data and the, your creativity in your mind is is the limits of the programs, as long as you have the people to call through the data and understand it. So as the Long Beach police officers are driving around with their cars with the LPRs on them, reading plates, you can get plate data. And if you notice that a particular plate is always on a particular block, but it's not registered to anybody on that block, the building department might want to use that data to say, well, let's try and figure out why this particular car is parked on a particular block every single night between eleven o'clock at night, eight o'clock in the morning. That could be done and it's legal.
Okay, so right now, there's just, it's kind of a disparate system, but it depends on the on the collaboration and the communication between the departments to get to that.
Right. So you'd be talking at that particular point in time that somebody would actually be complaining that there's a illegal illegal apartment someplace, and then the investigation with the building department would be enhanced by the data that you have in the LPR.
Okay, and my final question is, uh, Ron, uh, would you need additional servers in order to make this work?
No, everything is cloud based here.
Okay.
It's all over the cloud and it's all managed by GTECHNA at this point, and we have access from on the on the backend to a dashboard to be able to manage some things. And as you need more data, we can, we can almost purchase more data. And I'm watching GTECHNA shake his head like, oh, I'm paying attention.
Okay, so um, with that, I think we'll move to the, you know, the 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 big, the big top, big part, uh, the highlight of is finances. We'll start with Tina, go to Roy.
I I just want to say one other thing about LPRs. What you don't know right now is that almost every tow company in Nassau and New York City and Long Island has LPR readers on their car and at other trucks. And as they're driving down the streets, they're collecting all this data already. So your license plate and where you've been is read continuously all day long and a pattern, like if you go missing, that's how we find missing people now. We can, we just track their plates, we track their phones, and we track their their uses of their 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 information. So it, the world is actually becoming, you know, it was in nineteen eighty four in two thousand twenty two.
Okay, I I don't want to think about that right now.
Also, Ron, we we don't necessarily have to keep the data indefinitely. We have purge tasks that can be configured based on how long the city wants to keep some of this stuff. So keep in mind, Karen, we're not just necessarily going to keep it indefinitely unless Ron wants to and he has every right to if 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 he wants to. But we can purge that at a, you know, monthly basis, bi-weekly basis, whatever it may be.
Yeah, it's it's all archived data that gets put away in cases. But you would want to know that if we if we found out that there was a murder that took place in an apartment and the, and nobody found out for six months, well, the first place we'll go, and you see the LPR data, and start to investigate who was in the area at the time that that took place. It would have been very useful over the summer uh for the um, for the sunset parties, extremely useful. Having all this data because we were able to narrow down very quickly who uh who you did that shots fired, for instance, so.
Okay, we're we're at an hour and a half right now, so we'll we'll close it with the uh with the finances. So Tina, you want to take over?
Uh, sure, yes, I I want to uh echo what folks have said, Karen and others, to thank you all for um, a very thorough presentation of this very important project uh to our city. So so thank you for that. um a very thorough presentation of this very important project uh to our city. So so thank you for that this evening. Um mainly, I I don't know who is the best to answer this, if it's Gerard or or James, I don't know. Um or perhaps, you know, others. Is there a revenue projection based on some of the other comparable cities that you have a calculation for that we might be able to expect?
I would, I would actually pitch this one to Ina, I think, for the moment, because she's been, she's been dealing with a lot of those models.
Hi, good evening. Um hi. Um so I I um have to say, though, I I hate to disappoint you all, but finances are actually not going to be included in this presentation because uh for actually two reasons. One, it's uh rather complicated, involved, and it um needs its own meeting, right? And uh two, I'm still having some of my questions unanswered, so um I wouldn't want to share with you something that's not fully that it's uh by me. I'm still doing my due diligence. I can talk a little bit of conceptually about the revenues and expenses of the program and um point where where my questions are. Um if that's what what everybody wants to hear, but uh basically, we're going to be presenting finances of the project um in a separate meeting.
Okay, um I think it would be helpful if you had the conceptual at least for right, you know, in the moment, and then we could get more thorough.
So before you start, you know, would you, one of the things uh we want everyone to know is that the finances were set up one way when we originally did the R I P. And then later F R B came back and said, we're going to finance uh finance, uh give you money, and under the money was this project. And so we've gone back and asked for different models. So she can give you her conceptual, but we're still working through that because we know now we have money coming from elsewhere that can help us offset some of the costs. So go ahead, Ina.
Sure. Um so on the revenue side, uh basically, it's a pretty um I I know that a table and once we're doing a financial presentation, it's obviously going to be accompanied by slides. Uh but on the revenue side, if you guys can imagine, the formula for the revenue is pretty straightforward. Um it's the number of spaces that we have available for the program times the number of hours that each of one of the spaces um that we will charge for each one of the spaces, like from nine o'clock in the morning to eleven o'clock at night. Uh times the assumption of the percentage of usage, right? So will there be a hundred percent demand or will there be an eighty percent demand? And that's something that I personally am still reviewing. That's something that I'm working with Jerry on. These are the models that he uh prepared uh based on his extensive experience in an industry. Um and then that, one one, once you get a product of those three things, you multiply it by what we'll decide to charge it per hour, right? So that, and and that's how you arrive at the total revenue from the parking. Another component of the revenue is enforcement. How much we think people not going to be parking and how much we'll be able to collect uh through the enforcement. So um that 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 would be a gross revenue of uh on a very simple, basic uh level. In terms of the course, there are several components of the course. And like Donna said, when we were doing an RFP, we were um asking for um for s- for for one um approach. And then uh between the time that uh we issued an RFP and got a proposal, uh we got a grant from F R B in November and um we are um exploring, and we asked Jerry to um to relate it to uh the vendor that we actually want to know what it would cost if we were to um go ahead with our own financing. So on a course side, it's um if we were to use the current proposal, the city only has um an expense of hiring four specials alongside with their fringe benefits, and um basically, for the most part, that's it. Um however, obviously, there are other components of this if we are to um untangle the with the way that it's proposed right now. There is a software cost, a hardware cost, there is a maintenance cost, the the so so um that that's something that we're still looking for, to review those components so we can make uneducated um and best decision for the city um one, once we have that information. I don't have this information at this point, so um hopefully, we'll we'll get it soon. And once that's done, we'll have another meeting with you where we'll be presenting that um in a very, very great detail, because that's very um obviously very important project that um not only going to improve on a quality of life for the city of Long Beach and for the visitors to our central business and to their drivers through the business, through the central business and through the Park Avenue, but will also allow us to recoup millions of dollars that the city um spends on the road maintenance, that city borrowed and pays in the debt service on the road maintenance um on how of our operating course of uh the street maintenance from um ev- every operating um budget. So that's something that um I'm actually very much looking forward to.
And it's important to for everybody to know, we're looking at three different potential ways of doing this. One is the lease-to-buy. One is the vendor finances everything, and then they take a portion of the revenue until it's paid for. And the third option is that we pay for it outright. And so that's really looking at all of that and then looking at the user's fees and what we can use the revenue for. Um that is why we just need one meeting, and hopefully, it will be extremely soon, just on the financing of this whole project.
Thank you. Uh that was the brunt of my questions centered around cost and revenue, so I will wait.
Uh Roy, did you want to um get your questions in?
No, at this, at this point, I I know nothing as far as the cost. You know, except Ina said, i- i- we could bring in potentially millions of dollars to repair the roads and stuff like that. Um, you know, anybody's happy to hear millions of dollars. The question is, you know, how realistic is that? So, you know, the best thing to do is just wait.
Okay, thanks, Roy. Um John, did you have any questions or insights um in preparation for the next presentation?
Possibly. So we talked about the three potential models, you know, um revenue sharing, you know, lease to own or just buy outright. But in addition to that, there is the management, all the backside management of the system. It's going on, the tracking of everything. Uh there's obviously, uh how is the 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 model structured for um for the vendor to to make their revenue? In other words, is it a flat fee for the management of the system? Do you take a share of the parking revenue?
That's what we're look, that's what we're going to be looking at.
So that's still to be determined.
Because we don't have those numbers, so that is something that we have to look at, and then, and I understand what you're saying. We are, that that's why we have three different models and what goes into each model.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll, I guess we'll get that at the financial meeting.
Liz, did you have any, any comments?
No, I just want to thank everyone for their their great work from the, you know, Mr. McNally. Please relay um my gratitude to the staff. I know that you've been working on this for quite a while. And I just want to acknowledge uh former Councilman Mike Delory for pushing us to get this done. Thank you.
And and Karen, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank Donna for putting this proposal up on the website before the the meeting so people could follow along with it and actually, you know, announcing what the the uh issue was that we were going to discuss tonight. I think it's a great step forward, and I think a lot of people appreciate it. Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Roy, and we're 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 taking this and trying to do our best to make sure that we get the public notified of what we're doing in a more timely fashion, fashion. So I will make sure I take that back to the team.
Okay.
Um I just had a few financial comments in closing. Um although it was mentioned that, you know, the funds uh funds from this uh proposal could go to improve parking. I just want to make sure everyone is 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 painfully aware that um we need additional revenue sources just to keep, just to keep afloat. You know, um so let's 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 keep that in mind that, you know, we 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 can't be pie in the sky here. Uh we have to get additional revenue sources, and the Financial Restructuring Board was absolutely clear over two years, almost two years, over two years ago, that um for a financially distressed municipality, um you don't really have a choice uh not to install a parking meters at this point. Um in their, in their report, um again, they mentioned, um they mentioned at least, you know, six hundred thousand in revenue based on the annual revenue based on their projections. So um we're not, we're not talking peanuts here. So this is something that um we, you know, really, really um pleased that we're we're forging ahead on. Um I also want to uh ask or request that in the in the financial analysis, um each us, each scenario takes into consideration um the vendor component where they're saying that they will fully maintain the system, for example, for five years and then hand it over. So it's, you know, while it's well and good, it looks like it's quote-unquote free for the five years. There is a cost in the out years. So, you know, really would like to see the the projections, which uh Ina alluded to, is that if the vendor hands it over to us, there will still be annual uh software maintenance costs. So that's something that, you know, we we need to be mindful of. And also, um you know, you mentioned the four specials, um those are incremental hires for the system um uh that are projected right now, but there will also be time for current employees um to um monitor the system, and it would be important to make sure that we um allocate the percentages of some of the staff's time to maintain um this system so that we get a really full projection of what this system will cost and what it will, what it will bring in. Um I'd also like to make sure that um we get some feedback or comments from the staff on the other municipalities that you've interviewed um for this process. You know, some of the highlights, maybe even posted on the website, such as Rockville Center, so that, you know, people can see that, um you know, the system works and it and it is beneficial for us. In closing, I'd just like to again to thank everyone for their um for their hard work on this project. This is really important. And again, it's just a milestone for us that um that we are moving forward. So thank you, everyone, and uh John, you want to close? John McNally, you want to close?
All good. Thank you. We continue to forge ahead. I have a, I have COVID brain, so I am uh shot at this stage of the game. Thank you all for hanging. I know this was uh supposed to be something of a thirty thousand foot, but we were more at like fifty feet. Um so thank you for the engagement, the questions, uh and everybody taking time out tonight to learn more about this, because it is, it really is. It's a, it's critical for the city moving forward. So thank you, everybody.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.